Order, it's March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, nine o'clock. I'll do the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any changes to the agenda? The only thing we would be adding is a, is a emergency management, the, what do you call that list actually? LEPC membership, okay. Thank you. I'll just, when we get to them, I'll call if they're not here. Anything else to changes or?
Chairman Franchuk, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, state aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Next, we have the minutes in from February seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Is there any corrections or changes to the?
I'm going to accept the minutes as presented.
A motion to accept.
February seventh.
February seventh meetings, do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Rule call vote, then Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next, we have the minutes from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty, special meeting on that. Is there any corrections or changes to those minutes?
I'm going to accept the minutes from February fifteenth as presented.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Rule call vote, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next, counts payable and the condication, the amendment to them. Does there any questions on the counts payable and the bills continued? We have a couple, it's for the road department is RDO for our way trailer twenty-seven thousand, or so I should say sixty-seven thousand. Is that for new trailers for them?
For new belly dump, yes.
Okay. Okay. And Sheriff's Department, uh, lead, leads in line, uh, Power Plus Investigations, thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, leads online, we discussed that the other day, Dean, it's that investigators use that for pawn shops and things like that.
That's a annual fee then, or?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there's a emblem authority key fobs for sixteen hundred and thirty dollars.
Yep, that's the auto start for the new vehicles. Amanda, do you guys have access to that leads online as well, or no?
Okay.
Any other questions on the counts payable? Now I look for a motion to approve then the counts payable with the continuing bills. Supplement.
Chairman Franchuk, I would move to approve the bills and the bills continued for February twenty twenty-three.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Give a second. Any other discussion? Not rule call vote, Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion carried. Okay, next to the sheriff's report, Sheriff Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. Very intimidating presenting in front of this large crowd today. February highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department for two thousand twenty-three, toll calls for service, one thousand four hundred twenty-two, this is up from twelve hundred fifty-nine last year. One hundred eighty-five, one hundred and eighty-five traffic stops, this is up from one hundred eighty last year, three hundred and sixty-two public relations stops, that's up from two hundred twenty-seven last year, there's eight bar checks, that's down from twelve last year. Uh, speaking of bars, before I forget the, there was a transfer of ownership out in South Art for the I don't know bar. Forgetting her name, but I can get that to you if you guys are interested. Forth theft related calls for service, that's up from three last year, twenty-nine K nine, or excuse me, twenty-one K nine usages. Bobby with Truck Regis still on light duty, I believe she goes back next week on the road, does that sound right now? Okay. Responded to eighteen accidents, zero pedestrians, zero fatality, three hit and run, one injury and fourteen properties. Um, I think the accidents will be up again next month, or this month, excuse me. Transport service, twelve prisoner, sixteen court, zero medical, zero juvenile, one assist and four mental health. There's eighty-five total arrests for the month of February. Uh, again, that's more realistic number per month, but considering February is a shorter month, uh, maybe it is still a little up there. Uh, a couple of things I wanted to discuss with you guys, the Dickinson animal shelter agreement, Amanda and I met on that and, uh, possibly making some changes to that, I need to revisit with the police department on that as well. Uh, next year, we'll have to create a, um, if we do, uh, continue on with that, we'll have to create a budget line item in the Sheriff's Department budget to deal with, um, uh, costs going to the animal shelter. Um, obviously, we do have city contracts that, uh, pertain to, uh, the, um, taking in of animals, so to speak, so we would have to have a line item to, to pay out that, so. That's why they do pay the city contracts for, uh, things like that. Uh, out of state travel, uh, we have two going to Minnesota next month for EVOC training, which is, uh, emergency driving training. We held back two vehicles, for our trade-ins, so they can use those vehicles during that training, so they don't destroy our new patrol vehicles, we'll trade those in after that training. Uh, I don't know if you guys met the new hire out in front there, Latasha Clatt, uh, that is Dave Clatt's daughter, he's one of our deputies, K nine handlers. Um, she will be permanently stationed at the courthouse here, she, we couldn't get her into the January, or excuse me, February academy, so she'll be going in the summertime. And then we have our Easter egg hunts coming up again in Bellfield, Richardson and Dickinson, hopefully weather permitting. Any questions?
So on the animal shelter.
Mm-hmm.
Like, what's our responsibility there? I mean, is, do we have as much responsibility as the city has because the city goes and collects animals or whatever, what do we do?
So the way the contract reads, right now there's initial fifty dollar impound fee and then ten dollars per day up to five days.
Right.
For animals.
Older though, doesn't it?
What's that?
Doesn't the owner get charged for that?
If the owner does pick up the animal, then yes, the owner would pay that cost, but if the owner never does come pick up the animal, then that's the fee that we would have to incur out of our budget, essentially out of the city.
How much is, does, I mean, is there a percentage of the city versus us?
No. No, so these are dogs that we bring in from Richardson or Bellfield, uh, for example, um, so it's, uh, it's not, so someone from the county can't just bring in a dog. Um, we won't pay for that, so this is dogs that we physically impound or our deputies impound, so. Um, other costs that could incur, if it's an injured animal, um, you know, that's going to require some vet bills, we would be on the hook for that as well, so.
Is there a line item in your budget for this?
There's not.
Okay.
There's not, should have, uh, by my mistake, twenty twenty-three, there should have been a line item to pay that out, but there's not, so.
Who's currently paying out the city, them?
No, we're still paying it, I just don't have a line item specific to that in my budget.
Gotcha.
Do we have a lot that we bring in?
I wouldn't say so, no. Um, uh, there was a case that, uh, we're trying to figure out here that came from the Gladstone area, but other than that, um, you know, one a month would probably be a good average, I'd say.
A little bit off subject, but on subject, if there's a rabid animal.
Mm-hmm.
Does that fall, I mean, if it's within the city limits, it's city's problem, if it's out of the city limits and it's our problem?
Correct.
Little, little towns everywhere, everywhere?
Yep.
As far as vet bills, though, don't we have a contract with West Dakota to, to handle these animals, or is that just for your service dogs?
Just for our service dogs.
Okay.
See, last month that I see, this month we had a few hit and runs, is there these major things or just fender benders things or?
Um, no, we haven't had anything, uh, like vehicles being totaled, hit and run kind of time, kind of things, no.
Any other questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Next, through the road department, Elizer.
Well, good morning, everyone. Uh, kind of what the road crew is, you can only imagine what we're up to today. Plowing snow in here and there, and one thing I'd like to ask the public is to have a little patience. I mean, it's going to get worse. That wind we had on Sunday there, it kind of blew, the ditch is full on the other side, so now our ditches are full on both sides. So any snow we get is going to start blocking the roads and I would recommend if, if you have to be to town for some type of, uh, surgery or something that you gotta be there, probably new battery to spend the night, because it's going to be harder and harder, and we plowed some roads yesterday, got called this morning to blow it shut again. It's, um, and I think we're going to continue to have this problem, so all I ask is some patience, I don't mind receiving phone calls, but I mean, we're doing the best we can, you know, to get out there and takes quite a while now, we gotta wing and push a lot more snow than we normally do on just a basic cleanup. Um, fixing a few plows, plows are, especially the truck plows, we noticed yesterday we're having a lot of problem with the hitches on the front of a couple plows, lucky we caught them yesterday and so we're fixing them back up. Um, received a bridge funding here last week on a bridge down south of Bellfield, it's a hundred percent construction and, uh, design, so that'll be coming through the pipe stream, but that'll be down the roadways. Um, a little bit here, we'll have a, I don't know when you want to do that bid opening on gravel, miscellaneous paving and equipment rental and fencing. I think, uh, what we normally do is just kind of read out the gravel crushing price and then I'll take the rest of the bids and make sure that the, I mean, the, uh, proof of insurance and, uh, contractor's license in there and then I'll, we can get a list, publish, hoopet, everything. And then other than that, uh, that's about all I have.
The video, we scheduled for nine thirty, so.
Okay. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we go to interstate engineering.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
We can kind of disregard that upgrade, update there, lots kind of happened the last couple of days. Uh, funding list came out on Friday for DOT projects, bridge replacement projects like this, and we were denied on this particular project. Uh, I'm not really sure what we should do going ahead, I'd like to get some more, uh, internal input from some of our people and probably keep asking some questions to the DOT before next month's meeting and try to get some insight on what we can do going forward, but it doesn't really look good. Uh, Al mentioned that he was talking to Brian Fuchs and he said that there might not be another round of funding until two thousand twenty-six for a twenty-seven build, so I'd like to confirm that and just see what our options are moving forward before next meeting and go from there.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Questions?
Previously had mentioned that we had denied funding for that South Art Bridge, is that correct?
Yep, this is the one.
So, I mean, that you have a temporary structure on that, right? How long can it be temporary?
Indefinitely.
Really, safety goes, I mean, it's, it's good for?
It's, it's just a one lane bridge and the problem is it's on a real sharp curve, so when you even get on with the vehicle, you gotta line up. It's very unfortunate that it didn't get funded. Um, the DOT has got a scoring system. If we'd have known how they're scoring exactly, we maybe could have switched a few things around, but, uh, Brian was going to do a little more check-in, so. It's unfortunate.
Hundred percent it's not going to get funded this year like we thought, I mean, we, but you never know type thing, or can you?
I think there's, I think, well, I think, yeah, I, I don't have an answer for that this, at this time. I'd like to keep lobbying them and, like you said, appeal to them and see, you know, what we could have done differently or what we can still do. Uh, they haven't looked at the temporary structure yet, the DOT, so they might shut it down in the condition that it is, I, I don't really know.
So would that be a plus or a minus, because if they shut it down, are they going to push to get that funding through, if they shut it down, it's shut down till twenty-seven?
Right, that could be a, that could be a real issue, it might be closed, you know, for three years, four years.
The, the bridge itself is safe to cross. Right. I mean, you, I mean, it's, it's well built, well built, it's just that you can't get a semi across it and we have to clean it with a skid steer because we can't get a big piece of machinery on top of it, so. And if it, if it's totally closed, there's a long way around for some of them people to get all the way around. Before, when it was closed temporarily, they actually parked a vehicle there and then on one side, then they crawled across and then they went to town with another vehicle, so. It's a big inconvenience and hopefully, but it doesn't sound good that we're going to get some funding. But at least the car can still get across it or pick up.
Is your future plan to straighten that road?
Yes.
Through that area?
Yep, I think Jim's got a design where we're going to cut that nasty kink out of there.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty steep curve there.
Because a lot of people, if they're not paying attention, they'll end up in the trees and it's it's a back way home when people are having a few too many at the bar, so, but anyway.
Roger that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here from Highland Engineering? See, not, okay, next we'll move on then to Lordton Plains.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Morning.
Just a real, uh, short, brief update. Um, really about the only update is on one hundred and thirty-first, um, that was bid in January. Uh, contractors looking at starting sometime late fall, which is probably the last half of October, maybe, um, even into November, but, um, that's about the extent of, of the update for that project. Um, and that's really about the only update I can provide, so.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. KLJ, is anyone here from KLJ? No, okay. Go on to the disaster shelter training, Shauna Davenport.
Good morning, Shauna Davenport. Um, I was notified that the American Red Cross is going to be doing a disaster shelter training. It's a really good program and obviously, if we were to ever have to open a shelter here, I'm going to be looking for people within Stark County employees to help operate that until the Red Cross could arrive and help us. The shelter training is six hours long and it includes opening and closing the shelter, going through intake and information, dormitory and feeding and supplies. I have ten people that are interested, the only problem is it is on the same day as your April commission meeting, so I am wondering if you would be willing to change that date because there are some people that come to your meetings regularly that would like to attend, so.
Okay.
What are the qualifications for attending this?
It can be anyone in the county that would be able to work with me during that, so.
I would guess to look for a motion, I thought would, uh, Thursday, the sixth worked for the April sixth to change the date to?
I'm not going to be here that Thursday, not that it matters that I'm here, it's Easter weekend, so just keep that in mind. But I can send someone else down, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Anybody else have any conflicts for that date? Or if you look at another date that would work?
What date is it?
April fourth.
The fourth, they're moving, I was looking at the sixth, moving it to the sixth Thursday. Or I guess the fifth would work too, if there's a conflict with me.
It's just a day training, so we'll be back.
Okay.
Where's the training at?
In Bismarck, man down. There's another one in Minot the day before, but then we'd have to keep people overnight because it starts really early in the morning and just be more money for the county to do that.
What's the training fee?
If there is no cost for the training, we'll just, my department's going to cover any mileage or per diem for the employees that are going.
Okay. I guess I'd look for a motion to change it to either probably the fifth or sixth.
I think I'd be better with the fifth.
Okay. Are you making a motion then?
I was, I think we're still in discussion here, so, I don't know.
Who else work there?
Motion and then we'll discuss it. Okay.
Neil, does that work for you, or?
Yeah, either the fifth or sixth.
Okay.
But, well, then I'd make a motion to have our April meeting, commission meeting on the fifth and change it from the fourth to the fifth.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, state aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you all.
Okay, you might as well go with your, that lit, your list too.
Morning Commissioners. Um, so we had on our, so for our local emergency planning committee, um, the meeting we had on, in January, um, we did an annual review, annual update on the membership list and we just made some revisions. Um, the revisions to the list were, you, you guys all have a copy of it in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the revision, so we removed, um, NDES completely, since it's a local planning committee, um, and then added Richardson Taylor Ambulance, they weren't on there, um, submitted Southwest, or sorry, removed Southwest Emergency manager, yeah, Southwest EMS Association, um, added City of Dickinson Public Works too, since they weren't on there, so. And then we also, uh, so we added, um, so the specific position is, um, is left under the agency with or with or designee, so we, we put or designee that way if, um, if, you know, if they wanted to send someone, we just figured it's more general to put designee, so. Um, those are the updates, I just need, um, the commission to approve it and then the, and then Dean, you'll have to sign it if you guys approve it, so, yeah. Do you guys have any questions, or?
Any questions?
These are just additions?
Uh, yeah, well.
Full list of members?
That is the full list, yeah, so if you guys have any, yeah, if you have any recommendations.
Uh, just was looking, that South Art Rural Fire Department's not on this list.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll definitely have to add it, yeah.
Or, and Dickinson Rural Fire Department is not on the list.
They aren't?
No.
We'll have to look at that, they should be on there.
Yeah, the Dickinson, the Dickinson rule is on this back page.
Oh, yep, so sorry, there's a second, that, yeah, I printed them front and back.
I got you. Oh, you're fine, I didn't look, you're good.
So is South Art.
Yeah. I shouldn't have printed it front and back.
I printed them front and back.
Oh, oh, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Any other questions? Now I'll look for a motion to approve the list then for the LECP committee.
I'd make a motion to approve the LEPC membership list.
Okay, do you have a second?
I can stick him up.
Have a second. Rule call vote, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Only thing I was going to add is I got the contract from, uh, Prairie Engineering for the construction contract for the heating and then cooling for the courthouse, so that'll be, that'll be give to the state's attorney for approval for, be signing that, so if they're aware of that. I guess that covers everything in our meeting, other than our bid opening, it's you might as well go ahead with that.
The bids were due by nine.
They're due by nine, so we can go ahead with those then.
Okay, Al. Um, so I'm just going to be opening the crushing and stockpiling gravel bid and making sure the documentation is in here for that one. Um, then I'm going to hand Al the rest of the envelopes for the other bids and he's going to make sure the documentation is there and then we will post. He's going to accept them all and then we will post the ones that are accepted, so here's.
These are all bids for gravel crushing, equipment rental, pavement and fencing, correct?
Yep, and we only had one bid for the gravel crushing and that is, um, Fisher Sand and Gravel, so I'm just going to check that the documents are in here. Okay, we did have their contractor's license in there and, um, I will hand over the bid to Dean and he can. Read that out.
Okay, the only bid that was submitted was for Fisher Industries, the codes for, uh, crushing and stockpiling one inch minus gravel, and the unit price is three dollars and ninety cents.
Per, per ton?
Yes. But, but that's per cubic yard, right? Per cubic yard, I should say. Need a motion then to approve all the bids on there, Al, or? Look for a motion then to prove that all the bids that were submitted today.
And we can, to, post it, we can post it online, with the approved ones, if they're not missing anything.
And they'll, they'll be approved online then when we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll get a list and we can get it into the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve then all bids submitted today.
I mean, I don't know how many bids, I mean, do we have to know how many bids or anything like that, or do we?
Well, they're all excited.
This is a little bit different situation, maybe.
This is a little bit different situation, maybe Al can explain it better, but we usually ask for bids for these types at the beginning of the year and accept them all so then Al has a few or has multiple people or companies that he can call on, whether it's-
Depending on, depending on what it is.
Yeah.
You know, just for, if we need, like this time, this time we might need some doses for moving snow removal, so we just, we've got a bid from them so we know what our rental rate's gonna be.
All right. Why make a motion that we accept the bids that Al's gonna go through?
They'll be posted on the, on the minutes on the website then. Have a second on that motion then?
I guess I'd have a question as far as the gravel crushing bid, is that typical just to get one?
Yeah.
Usually it's all we ever get is one bid.
Okay, it's in line from last year, that number that you just heard?
Yeah, it's just up, it's just up a little bit, I suppose, because of the price of fuel.
Okay. As far as the remaining bids that you're looking at, I mean, I mean, these are just bids that you're not necessarily gonna use these folks.
No. If we need them, if I need a track or if I need something, if we have an emergency and I need some equipment that we don't have, I can go through the list and see what we got and then that way we have an agreement with them and we got their rates.
Yes, I don't know who all bid.
We're gonna make that list.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can get it before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I'm just going through to make sure they got all their proper documentation.
You wanna hold off then on this motion then?
Yes, I think so.
Then we guess we got everything, we are through our agenda, I guess we'll just go on break then until he gets that summarized. We'll do a ten, ten minute break here.
I tested it ahead of time just to make sure I'd have it down and apparently that wasn't good enough, so, sorry for that. Thank you very much. As was said, my name is Benjamin Ray, I'm the executive director for Dickinson Parks and Recreation District and I'm grateful to be here today. I had met with Lisa just after the first of the year and it, we had kinda thought this would be a good opportunity to get in front of the commissioners and, and talk a little bit about what we're doing as a park district for the city. I'm new to the area, I've been here for seven months now, really excited to be in Dickinson. Throughout my career, one of the things I've been most proud of and I guess is important to me is collaboration and communication. And so, you know, as I met with Lisa, we felt like it was important to kinda talk about maybe some of the things that we're doing as a district so that we can show the collaboration that's, has already occurred between our district and with the county. Most of you are probably aware of the Friendship Park project that's in progress right now over by Tenth and, and the freeway, just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on this. First of all, this is a 1.6 million dollar playground project, that's probably the largest playground-
We'll call the meeting back to order. We're still, we only had the one bid for the gravel crushing, the three dollars ninety cents per cubic yard on that from Fisher Sand and Gravel. You need a motion to accept that bid.
Set a motion for Fisher Sand and Gravel Crushing Bid for twenty twenty-three?
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. The other discussion. Roll call vote, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Chair votes, I motion carry. And there was no bids for paving on that, so the other ones we'll go into is, we received bids for fencing from Nelson Fencing, Ty Newton Fencing, Midwest Fencing and Erosion, Ruckus Services LLC, then for equipment rental with K and T Services, Martin Construction, Edward H. Schwartz Construction, Cordova Construction, and Halubichuk Construction. Then the erosion control was K and T Services and Midwest Erosion Control. I'd look for a motion to accept those bids from those firms.
I'll make that motion to accept the, those firms that you just mentioned to be available for our road department if they're needed.
Okay, have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh. Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Chair votes, I motion carry. Takes care of that or takes care of our agendas or anything else need to discuss, if it's not on the agenda? I ought to look for a motion to adjourn the meeting then, and we'll have our park board meeting after this.
So move.
Motion adjourned, I have a second.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carried. How long soon do you want to have your park board meeting? Right away?
Seventh meeting of the Stark County Park Board to order. And then I would like to see if there's any objection to Bernie Marsh being appointed as the chairman pro tempore for this meeting. Hearing no objections, then we'll have Bernie Marsh the chairman pro tempore.
All right, we'll continue on here. Out of the board members listed, there are two that are missing, but the rest of us are all here, so, and as our invitees. We'll move on to the regular agenda discussion items, ratify the agenda, is there anything to add or take off the agenda? If not, then we'll continue on. Minutes of the last meeting, January fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do you have to approve the agenda?
Well, yeah. I'm, I'll wait for a motion to approve the agenda since there's no ratifications.
Chairman Marsh, I would approve to ratify the agenda.
Is there any seconds?
All second.
All those in favor of accepting the agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Okay, now we'll go into the minutes of the last meeting, January fifth, twenty twenty-three. If you've had a chance to take a look at it. I'd be looking for a, a motion to accept the minutes from January tw- January fifth. Okay, good, welcome Randy.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from January fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes from January fifth, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Minutes are accepted, now we have a guest speaker. Benjamin Ray, Dickinson Parks and Recs. See if I can figure this out. Oh, yeah, that'd be great if we were touchscreen, right? That went away when I plugged it in. Perfect. Okay, I tested it ahead of time just to make sure I'd have it down, and apparently that wasn't good enough, so, sorry for that. Thank you very much. As was said, my name is Benjamin Ray, I'm the executive director for Dickinson Parks and Recreation District, and grateful to be here today, I had met with Lisa just after the first of the year, and it, we had kind of thought this would be a good opportunity to get in front of the commissioners and, and talk a little bit about what we're doing as a park district for the city. I'm new to the area, I've been here for seven months now, really excited to be in Dickinson. Throughout my career, one of the things I've been most proud of, and I guess is important to me, is collaboration and communication. And so, you know, as I met with Lisa, we felt like it was important to kind of talk about maybe some of the things that we're doing as a district, so that we can show the collaboration that has already occurred between our district and with the county. Most of you are probably aware of the Friendship Park project that's in progress right now over by Tenth and, and the freeway. Just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on this, first of all, this is a one point six million dollar playground project. That's probably the largest playground project in this, that this area has ever seen. And I really want to highlight that this was, this really took a collaboration to happen. As you can see here, it was funded one quarter by the city and the county, one quarter by the parks district, a quarter by private donations, that's mostly through the Friendship Park Committee, and then a quarter through the land water conservation fund grant. So about four hundred thousand dollars roughly from each of those different entities to make this come to pass. Where we're at right now is all of the subgrade work, the parking area is all complete. The pavilion was completed this last month, and the playground, the exterior is pretty much done at this point. These pictures are a few weeks old, and they've moved to the interior of the restroom facility. The playground we are, is all in place, except for the port in place structure, or the port in place lament that'll go under the structure. We just didn't get to it before the weather early in November, so we're hoping by May or June to have that project and be ready for a grand opening, and we'd certainly like to invite the commissioners to come to that grand opening when we get ready for that. And really appreciate the contribution from the county for this project. Couple of other things that kind of, that may be of interest to the county is out at Patterson Lake. So there's a couple of different things we're doing out there. We have a state grant that we're working on to improve some of the parking areas. First is over where the game and fish is at. You may, if you've been out there anytime soon, you've seen that we, we moved a bunch of dirt into that area. We're reconstructing that to improve the flow of traffic and parking. Again, another good collaboration with the sport complex going into the city. They had a lot of extra material which we were able to utilize to, for this project. I've also been in touch with Al, and as, as the weather gets better, there are four other access points to the crooked crane trail that we would like to improve the parking. So that, you know, where they're just right off the side of the street to provide a little bit better vehicle access to those points. You'll also notice here that we have, we've chosen this year to participate in one of the state parks programs, which is called Twelve Months Twelve Hikes. This has traditionally been a program that has been reserved strictly for state parks, but they reached out to us this year and wanted to expand that to local parks and park areas to get more people out and to familiarize them with different trail options. So we, we're, we're happy to do that, so if you go onto the state park site, you'll see our trail listed this year out at Patterson Lake as one of the twelve hikes for this year. Not a great time of year to get out there right now with the snow this year. I have been told, just so you know, that since I came from a warm weather climate, that this long winter is my fault. So my stuff reminds me that often, so. I came from southern Utah, so everyone right now, it's about seventy degrees and they're all out golfing, so. And they call and remind me often as well, so. We recently, in fact, just this last month, as a park board, we approved our strategic plan for the next three years, and I just want to highlight a few things. The items in green here are kind of our strategic priorities. These are the things that over the next ten to twenty years that we really want to focus on as a park district. So employee retention, recruitment, and well-being. I, I don't think I've been to a meeting yet since I've been here where how do we find and retain employees has not been a discussion. Becoming a tourist destination, what can we do to bring more people to the community that are going to spend dollars and may decide that, hey, this is a great place to be, I might want to relocate here. And the third item is, we want to make sure that recreation is available to all segments of the community. And when we say that, we mean every ability level, wherever you're located at, age, you know, ability, disability. We want to make sure that there's something to be found for everybody. Under each of those, you can kind of see what some of our focuses are over the next three years within each of those priorities. And I would ask if, you know, if, as you kind of look through that, if there's any questions that you have about any of those, or if there's any of those that stick out to you particularly. One of the things that's most important to us is going to be developing a master plan that, for the park district, because we have, we've never done an official master plan before, we've kind of played off the city master plan. But we plan on sending surveys out to the community to find out what kinds of things are, are of largest interest to the community as we move forward. I figured it would be important here to kind of talk a little bit about my personal philosophy, and I would say that this is what I'm instilling within our employees at the park district, is why, why do we invest in recreation? Why is that so important? And there's really five different things that I look for. When somebody is looking to relocate, maybe the job is the first thing that attracts them, but what keeps them here and what has their family come with them is what do I do once I get there? And so that, we can play a major role in recreation and bringing people into our community that can be an asset to our community professionally, you know, and just kind of building that community feel. There, there are few places in our society right now that build community as much as recreation. It crosses all boundaries, all lines, people from different backgrounds and beliefs will come together for recreation in a way that they don't in any other way. We all know about the physical improvement side, but the mental health side, it's been shown many, many times in recent years through studies that those that participate in community recreation, and particularly group recreation, have much better mental health than those that don't. That is a huge, mental health aspects are really important in this community. It's one of the priorities of our, of our local health district and the hospital to address needs in that area. And recreation is uniquely positioned to be able to assist with that. As well as environmental sustainability, we have a lot of discussions about Patterson Lake, and how do we improve the quality of the water in the lake? So that we're providing recreational opportunities as well as making sure that that stays the way that it is for future generations to be able to enjoy. One last thing I just wanted to kind of show you here is, at the West River Community Center, where do our members come from? So as you would expect, a large number of the members come from Dickinson City. However, I found it interesting as I looked through this, that of our memberships, about sixteen percent of our total memberships come from people who live within Stark County, but outside of the city of Dickinson. And then another eight percent from with outside the county. So we do get quite, and these are just membership holders, this doesn't include those that come in on daily usage. These are ones that just hold a pass to that, so you're getting a, a pretty large draw of people that come in, and it's not just those that live right nearby. So I felt like that was important to point out what a vital resource the community center is to all members of, of the community and throughout the county. That's, that's all I have for you today, but I'd be willing to take any questions, any comments that you would like me to take back to our, our park board.
I would, I, I think it's nice collaboration that they come over here and, and working together, so that's what we need to do is work together with the county park, city park, and the city, so I think that's, it's really good for him to show up today. Thanks.
I would echo that. That, I think it's going to be critical that we have some collaboration between the city and the, and the county going forward.
I've been working a lot with city administrator Dossinger to put together a quality of life committee, and that's probably something that you'll hear about moving forward, where we get a, a lot of the interested parties together to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we're all helping each other to make sure we're providing the best opportunities we can to all of the citizens. Oh, big projects. Probably the biggest things that we're working on, so we are collaborating obviously with the, with the university on the sport complex, so we'll be heavily involved with that. We also just approved to replace the turf at the baseball field. It's well, it's needed, this is going to be the twelfth season, so August, we will be replacing that moving forward. So, and that would, that's about a, that's almost a four hundred thousand dollar project to, to replace that turf. But again, when we talk about things that bring people to the community, we feel like that's a good investment for our community. Those are probably the biggest things that we've got in hand right now, a lot of our priority. Well, and I will mention, we are collaborating right now with the Dickinson Hockey Club to renovate all of the locker rooms on the Charbonneau side of the ice center. That's over a one million dollar project to renovate those locker rooms. So that'll, that's a, that's pretty substantial, and the hockey club is, is footing the bill for that. I was going to ask how much, how the bills are being split between your? So in that case, they're, they're, they're funding that a hundred percent because they feel like that's important to growing their program and showing that they're committed to that facility. In turn, we have invested two hundred thousand dollars in a new condensing tower for the ice center that will also be going on, going in later this month. So I think that the, you know, we have good partnership with all of our user groups to provide those services. Any other questions or comments, anybody? If not, thank you. All right, thank you. Welcome, welcome to our community. Okay, we'll move on to all business. Southwest Speedway, trademark name. Oh, great.
Um, as far as Brad Rough Rider Bonner Sports, as far as the trademark name, so at the end of this season will be the end of the trademark name that the previous group had already signed up for their three years. So I had just talked to Lisa a little bit before this, the plan is to just let it lapse, they're not going to renew it. And then at that point in time, either the county or ourselves can take over the trademark name. Trademark name, that way there's no exchanging of monies right now and having the hassle of going through that process. They're, they're not going to pursue anything, so we're, I think we're in the green there. If anybody's got a problem with that, I can go back to them and try to negotiate something else, but that's a plan moving forward right now.
Good plan.
I feel like it was good for all parties.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good plan.
So. Uh, it'll expire at the end of this year, so they, they re-up the trademark name right before we took, took over. And the trademark name lasts three years, and at the end of this year will be our three-year term, so.
All right.
But as far as that goes, um, I listened to the January meeting, sounded like there was some concerned safety aspects on our part, and I just want to take any questions, answer anything that could potentially, I mean, there, there was quite a bit there, so I, I'm here to answer any concerns that anybody has.
I guess, I don't recall the concerns that people had.
Some of it was the, um, obviously the concerns about the eight-wheel tractor out there not having brakes.
Oh, yeah. Correct, having a lockout tagout on it until it's fixed.
Yep, it, I tried to get out there, you still can't get into that facility right now. The plan is to remove the batteries as soon as, as soon as we can get out there. The tractor itself, I mean, we, we can't just, I mean, it's an eighties versatile, the, the parts for them aren't, just go to Walmart and pick them up, so. The, the brake system on there was actually built by Dakota Tool Machine here in town because nobody can get parts for it, so it's a matter of getting it back here, they're going to have to try to redesign something else. You can buy pads for it, but you can't buy rotors, and the rotor's the, the main part that's been failing, so. We do have, we do have a plan in place to get it fixed before the season starts, but the snow is kind of affecting that. One of the other concerns was the waivers being signed and keeping track of that. We, I mean, for our insurance, we have to keep our records for three years, so anytime there's an event that goes on out there, every single person signs a waiver that enters the pit side. It doesn't matter how old you are, the parents sign off on the children. We have a strict code that we have to go by, and that's per our insurance policies. As far as the cars and equipment, helmets, fire suits, all that standards are set by the sanctioning bodies that we race through. So IMCA is a sanctioning body, they actually hold insurance on some of the drivers that every year they have to, they have to have a membership to race for, for their elected classes. That requires within your specs of their safety belts, within your specs of their, their gloves, their fire suits, their helmets. Like everything has a standard that has to be set, this isn't, we, we can't just cowboy this and make it happen. Like there's standards set that we have to follow. And I, I literally personally stand at the corner where every car goes on the track, that's literally my spot to make sure that I see that they're wearing gloves, have their neck harnesses on, have their proper helmets. So it's, we on our side take the safety side very seriously, because, I mean, in the end, we are doing something fairly dangerous, so. I just, I wanted to break that to everybody's attention, that, that we, we do everything by the book as, as we can, so.
Yeah, I think there was some discussion, there was an individual that was hurt out there in the last year.
Signed a waiver, I sent Lisa the, the circled name, I mean, in the end, that's, in that situation, we were made aware four days after. So he was hurt, we helped him load his go-kart up, he left. Four days later, we found out that he goes to the hospital. I can't, I can't turn that into my insurance, I have two days. Two days after the incident or within the incident, I have to report it, so.
So is there a reporting policy, if you do get hurt, you have to report it right away?
Yes, yeah.
There is a policy that states that?
Yeah, so.
Not two days later, not a week later?
So for my insurance wise, I have, I have forty-eight hours to inform them that this happened, and then we go through the right process.
Does a waiver state that, or is it verbal?
Yes, yeah. And I think, I don't know if I emailed, I'm pretty sure I emailed her the, the whole waiver process that, I mean, it explains everything right in there. And it's got the reminder release form and everything, so on the go-kart side, the minor releases, obviously there, most of them are kids that are racing, so like that, that side of things, they have to sign the minor release, and then that, all the adults have to sign off underneath them as well, so.
So I'm not really familiar with your process, so is there any unsupervised access to the facility?
There is on the motocross side, so what we do every year is we sell a pass for a hundred and fifty dollars. They purchase those at the Honda dealer in town. But prior to them going out there, they have to do that, because when they buy their pass, they sign the waiver. So that, that allows them to go out there for the whole season to, to practice and do their thing. That, that's the only unsupervised activity that goes on out there.
And does that affect your insurance at all?
Nope, they, the insurance policy states that, um, as long as there's, I'd have to read through it, I think that they can't be racing, if it's just like they're out there practicing, it, it allows us to do that, so.
If you and I are out there practicing together, we're not racing each other?
Nope, we're just, we're driving.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in, in the end, that's, that's what those guys do, I mean, they're not out there, they're practicing their individual stuff, yes, so.
All right.
But other than that, I guess the only other concern we had was, we met with Lisa, that was three weeks ago or something, about getting the wall taken care of prior to the start of our season. We've made everybody well aware that that is a major concern on our side for the safety of the drivers and the people in the stands, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, honestly, this- Yeah, the honestly, this this weather's killing killing everybody.
It's March 5.
Yeah.
We've got two months to go.
Yeah. But that's all we have on our side. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Let's move on to new business and our fairgrounds restroom plans, advertising for bids.
All right. Andy, I'm going to put you down for a second. I do have a revised ad for bid for you guys that came from Amanda. So you all have a copy of that, and you were able to look at the plans that I received this morning for the layout of the restrooms. So those were given to us this morning. There will be one addendum that we'll have to come back on that. I'm being told because it they don't have the specs on the pressure tank that will have to be put in there. So that's it's drawn on there, but it's not actually spec to in on the plan sheets. So but we're ready to move forward and advertise for our three weeks and bid the plans out and see where we.
Do we have any estimation of what that facility might cost at this point? I mean, rough ballpark idea?
We don't. Two years ago, when we were working on it, it was estimated at $320,000. I don't know if that's realistic anymore with everything that has gone on. I'm I'm hopeful, but.
This is a separate building or an add-on to?
It's a separate building that's being put in right on the west side of the large grandstand on the outdoor arena.
Okay.
Yep. Because they have never done. We have those the two, I guess, their handicap-accessible restrooms that aren't very accessible. And this will be for those. And it will add, is it 20? See, ended up coming up with here.
Do we have this in the is there line item budget?
Yes.
For this?
We actually had approved two years ago, approved ARPA funding for it. So that is in on my budget side. If there would be something that should come crazy with the bids, you know, we'd have to look at what we needed to do at that point. But yes, there is line items for that.
Did you know how big that pressure tank's going to be?
That's what he's trying to figure out. We have a 300-gallon one in the concessions building currently. And so we kind of figured we probably needed a little more than that to flush all these toilets at once. So but the tanks are already there. So they're going to utilize the tanks that were put in by the board for this specific purpose. When the facility was first built, the underground tanks, and then it will actually go out to the drainage field. And so.
So the size of the facility, is there it's kind of is it based on some data that, you know, as far as flow and how many people show up out there for these events? Do you think it's going to be big enough?
It's going to be big enough. I think on some of our events, which I'm talking more Rough Rider Days, would be probably the only event and maybe the PBR that would have to be supplemented with porta-potties. So I think we'll still have to do some of those. But it is quite a cost savings for the users and renters of that facility just to not have it. I think the Fair Association themselves spends about $10,000 a year, eight to 10,000 a year, just on porta-potty rentals. And then the other people that bring them in and have to have those as well. So.
So then the septic system will keep up with drainage to the drainage fields and everything from those big events?
It was designed specifically for a restroom like this when they first did it. The board at that time were they were running short on some dollars. And so they chose not to do this and thought that they should do it in an add-on type of a thing. So that's why that's one of the first things we were doing is basically completing that outdoor. I have a lot of people in the community that comment a lot of if they would if we would have restrooms, they would actually attend a lot of our events that go on out there. So I think it's going to add a lot, especially with us now having the carnival moving out there, having our kids fair in with Rough Rider Days and and just kind of moving towards that full fair. I think it's going to be very important to have these restrooms there.
Looking at these here, these plans, is there a flow of traffic in one door, out another door? So.
It's one door on each of these is is what I look at here. And the the utility room is in the very middle part of it.
Would it make more sense to have a flow of traffic in and out one door when you have large venues?
I don't know. I guess I trusted the architects and engineers to design what they felt we needed by the data that we sent them, which was who attends and how many spectator events there are and that sort of thing. We've been pretty consistent with our spectator events for the last four years. And so that's the data that was given to them.
It's a good comment that you had though.
I can't really see the.
I know a lot of events centers have have in flow of traffic for restrooms. So just because sometimes events have large alcohol consumptions and lines create problems coming in and out of restrooms. And so they do have the flow in one door and out another door.
I can ask them if they wanted to revise that that plan, if you guys want me to do that. I will I will get that passed and revised. So then we really don't have to do anything more than that. And I can send you guys the full plans if you want to do some additional review on those as well. I just got those this morning right before this meeting. So that's why you all didn't get to see them first.
All right. Any other questions for Mrs. Heiser?
On the advertisement or on the bid is just change the time that you're going to accept bids to like 10 o'clock or 10:15. Because right now you have it until 10:30 and the bid opening at 10:30. So let's give it a little time.
Perfect. I'll make that change. Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion on this bid opening? Or we just you just go forward with that?
That's up to you guys. If I can get these plans done, what I'm anticipating, especially with us moving that meeting date a little bit, we still have an additional, we would probably have time for them to do that and still advertise for the bids to to be opened in that April meeting. Which it will be with the 14.
For the April 4th, so probably tomorrow for the April.
Okay.
Your first was how much you're going to be March 1st and so March 5th.
So then we'd be okay for, if you choose to approve that to go for bids.
Okay. Do we have a motion to have Lisa advertise for bids?
Chairman Marsh, I would move that we post in our local newspaper an advertisement for bids for our restroom facility at the county fairgrounds.
There a second?
That's second.
Any discussion? You advertise other places than just.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll this can be just a doesn't have to be a roll call vote. I don't think so. All those in favor of going forward with the advertisement for bids for the restroom signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That passed. Anything else that we need to discuss here?
No.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion adjourned.
Second.
Second. All those approving to adjourn the meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Meeting is adjourned.